Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us for today's special briefing insight about Israel's operation against Jenin's hotbed of terror. You don't need me to tell you all, but it's been a very busy, hectic and difficult few hours, a few days in the region, which is why we wanted to have this briefing to provide some much-needed context, some background, and some possible evaluation of what comes next. My name is Alex Benjamin. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Brussels Office Director here at Europe Israel Press Association, and along with my colleagues across Europe, we're delighted to welcome you along. Just to establish very, very briefly a couple of house rules, given that we have a number of journalists, we don't, and one or two diplomatic people in the audience. If you do have any questions, I will be opening up the chat facility in a second. And if you do have any questions for either one of our guests, please put your name and your media outlet first, followed by your question, and we will, of course, come to you and take your question at the earliest opportunity. So with that said, once again, thank you for being here. It's my great pleasure to hand over the hot seat to my colleague, the Director of Strategy at Europe Israel Press Association, who's currently based in Israel, Mr. Tal Rabina, who will introduce you to your guests and moderate for session. And I will wrap things up at the end and handle your questions from the chat facility. Tal, over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Alex. Thank you all for taking the time to be with us. As you all know, after two days IDF forces went out of Jenin, and in order to understand why they went in there, what was going on there, and the implications both on the security situation and the implications on the Israeli-Palestinian and Israeli-Arab relations, we are very happy to have with us Ron Ben Ishai, one of the most known military and political analysts in Israel, presenter of Yadiot Akronot and Yineet, the man that actually in the last 57 years has been personally in, I think, each and every war and conflict, not only here in Israel or the Middle East, but all over. And Ron is not a journalist of air-conditioned studios, but a journalist of the field. He was wounded three times while in combat. He even had the chance to save people's life during his journalistic work. And he was just coming out of Jenin, so he was there. He can share with us not only his knowledge, but also what he witnessed there. Also, we are very honoured to have former MK Rut Vasumanlande, who is a specialist in the Arab world, and she will elaborate more about the implication of the Jenin events on the Israel-Palestinian and the Israel-Arab relations. But first to you, Ron, why did Israel got in there for the first place?
In recent year, as a matter of fact, more than a year, the north of the West Bank became a hub of Palestinian combatants. You can, you might call it terrorists, you might call it guerrillas, but I will use the word terrorist because they, their main actions were against Israeli or Jewish civilians or Israeli soldiers, but mostly civilians. And that is why I will call them terrorists from now on. And the north of the West Bank, that means the area of the main town, major town, second, the biggest town in the West Bank, Nablus, Shchem we call it, and Jenin, the town, and Jenin refugee camp. They became a sort of a nomads' land that the Palestinian Authority was not able to send its security apparatuses there. And it became an ungoverned area where both terror and crime came out and was producing insecurity in, not only in the West Bank, but also in Israel. And it became a constant problem. In the beginning, the IDF and the GSS, the internal security intelligence of Israel managed to quell the terrorist squads with good intelligence, many intelligence coming from a technology, as we call it cyber, and the following the social media that the Palestinians use a lot, both as an instigation device and also as a tool to communicate with each other. The question is, and that was, that is also why it became such a source of intelligence. But the question, why north of the West Bank became such a nomads' land and ungoverned area is because it is, it has a sort of tradition, starting from the British mandate in the previous century, and going on to the Israeli occupation of the West Bank, that the north of the West Bank is rebellious, and there is almost a constant mutiny, and also a mutiny against the Palestinian Authority that was established in the Oslo agreements. But from time to time, this rebellious nature of the area becomes a major problem. And last year, in March 2022, started a wave of terror that in the beginning was, became very dangerous, mainly for Jewish settlers in the West Bank, but also it spilled over to Israel proper. And a lot of Israelis, a lot, that means dozens of Israelis and settlers, were killed by squads coming from the north of the West Bank, mainly from Nablus and from Jenin refugee camp. Now, Jenin refugee camp and the town are separate entities. I'm talking about Jenin refugee camp that became more and more and more ungoverned, that the Palestinian Authority's security apparatuses simply were ousted with fire from the refugee camp. And the refugee camp became more and more a sort of fortified perimeter of Katayev Jenin, which means the Jenin Brigade, that was composed of only local inhabitants of the Jenin camps. They called themselves, they belong, some of them belong to the Islamic Jihad, Palestinian Islamic Jihad, some of them... Do you still hear me?
Yes, it's okay.
Some of them were members of the Hamas, and some of them members of the Fatah, of the extreme branch of the Fatah. But they, they didn't, they were not operated by the main leadership of those terrorist organizations, but it was all based on a local leadership and local membership. And they pride themselves to call themselves local Jenians. And while Israel managed, together with the Palestinian Authority, to quell the wave of terror in Nablus, in Shchem, about half a year ago, Jenin became a real trouble. The turn of the story, in the story, became 10 days ago, when Israeli troop, a little, not so little, but a team of about 20 Israeli special soldiers went into Jenin and their armored vehicle went on a huge landmine, huge IED. It is not a landmine, it is a explosive charge that was detonated from a mosque. And it was so big, it was about 40 kilos of improvised explosives, and it's really through the vehicle, the armored vehicle, to the air. And I have concluded that it is, the whole camp, as a matter of fact, the whole perimeter of the Jenin refugee camp is a fortress, defended by roadblocks, defended by explosive charges, defended by cameras that gave early warning, which one, it became a military, a military perimeter.
Ron, is this, is this, this is the reason that the IDF took the asphalt off with the D9?
Justice.
Surely can you mute them, please?
Yeah.
Super.
Can I say?
Yeah, I will ask you again.
Can I continue with the background, or would you like me to answer the questions?
If you, if you could just, you mentioned the explosive under the asphalt of this road. I'm wondering whether this is the reason, because we saw all kinds of pictures of IDF D9s picking up all the asphalt from these roads of Jenin refugee camp. Is this the reason?
Not only in certain places, that where the intelligence, the IDF intelligence and the GSS knew in advance before entering that area, that there are explosive charges under the asphalt. Not all the asphalt. I was there yesterday. It is only a relatively small parts of the roads in the camp. It is not all the roads in the camp, but small parts of 100, 200, 300 meters in which they have planted those explosive charges under the asphalt, explosive, huge explosive charges, 30 kilos, 20 kilos. It's, by the way, improvised, not military spec devices, but improvised, but very efficient. Most of them were supposed to be detonated by either electric cables from houses around this road or a segment of the road, and part of them by a cellular phone, normal cellular phone that was supposed to detonate it. But on top of the explosive charges, the second thing that made the IDF go in was that they started to develop rockets, by self-made rockets, like they use in Gaza. And the IDF understood that if the IDF would not go inside sooner rather than later, not only the roads in the Jenin refugee camp will become planted with the explosive charges, but also there will be rockets, which means Jenin threatened to become Gaza. And to prevent this refugee camp, so-called refugee camp, from becoming Gaza, the IDF preempted, tried to preempt this process by entering the camp and destroying the infrastructure, which means the laboratories where they make the explosives, like destroying the workshops in which they assembled rifles, like M16 rifles and Kalashnikov rifles, et cetera, et cetera. It was quite an elaborated military industry in this camp, and also to collide with the armed Palestinians and give them a fight. Instead that they will go out from the camp to make ambushes to Israeli settlers or Israeli citizens, the IDF came in and the purpose was to prevent this escalation of the Jenin refugee camp from becoming what is today Gaza Strip, a hub of terrorists, a sort of a greenhouse for terrorists and terrorism. That is more or less the background.
So thank you very much. Thank you, Ron, very much for this. Before we'll go to get any answers of the participants in this briefing, and we urge you to use the chat we have here on our briefing tools, I would like to go for a minute to Rut Vasumanlande. Rut, Ron compared between Jenin and Gaza. We know in Gaza, the ruler is Hamas. Ron mentioned that the Palestinian Authority does not really control Jenin. Could you elaborate a little bit more about the relationship between the Palestinian wings and the implication such an operation has?
Sure. So hi, everybody. It's very good to be with you, and I'm honoured. And hello to Ron, a very prestigious colleague who knows a lot about the situation. So to answer the question, it's the Hamas's wet dream, pardon me for being so blunt, to wait for the day after Abu Mazen. He cannot wait, and yet he is waiting patiently until the day after Abu Mazen, because the Fatah mechanisms have certainly weakened, most recently, in a significant manner, but it has been going on for just over two years. And there is a huge amount of corruption, which leads to a huge degree of dissatisfaction, amidst the general public, and very, very particularly the young generation on the streets of the West Bank. If you read Arabic, all you need to do is go into the blogs and the social media, you'll get all the answers. You don't need to take my word for it. And then what happens is that they look at the leadership of the Fatah, they see a huge corruption, even though Abu Mazen is yelling as loud as he possibly can, that he has basically frozen the cooperation with Israel and the IDF and the coordination he has not. In fact, what the IDF is doing currently in Jenin is generally in the favour and in the interest of the Fatah leadership in the West Bank, because these young people who are armed and trained, et cetera, they do not belong to the Fatah, they don't want to see the Fatah, they don't see a leadership, any kind of leadership in that particular group of people. On the contrary, they either belong to the Hamas or the Islamic Jihad, are armed and trained to a large degree by people from outside of the West Bank, and they feel empowered because there was no significant IDF presence within the West Bank, Jenin, for a long time. And they feel very emboldened by the support and by the kind of hero status that they are receiving, particularly in the social media. And what happens is that all of their mechanisms and infrastructure is on top of civilian, very fragile points, such as nursery schools, mosques, almost synagogues, but I sincerely doubt there's any of those in the Jenin refugee camp, and other civilian, I would say, installations or buildings that serve very positive and day-to-day things. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, who support them? I mean, as much as we know, the IDF found more than hundreds and hundreds of explosive, very, as Ron said, very established infrastructure, a little military force. How they exist? Who support them? Is it the Hamas or the Islamic Jihad or Iran? How do they operate?
So there are a few things that I want to share with you. First of all, the fact that there is a very healthy, or rather unhealthy, kind of, how would you say, a very commercial market, of course, a black market for illegal weapons through the Israeli border. And there are factors from within Israel that are very active in that line of commerce. There's a huge illegal weapon market, amidst the Arabs who are Israeli citizens. This is something that has to be taken care of, not by the IDF, but by the Israeli police, who's been having trouble maintaining some kind of law and order in that regard. Only recently, legislation has been passed in the Israeli Knesset, allowing the government to take away the things that are written on the name of anybody who deals with illegal commerce or selling of arms. If you can imagine that, I couldn't believe it myself, but this law did not exist until very, very recently. I personally worked on it in the Knesset and very recently, and we could MK pass this legislation finally. And what that means is that anybody selling arms illegally, anything that is on his or his family's name can be taken. We're talking only about Israeli citizens. This is one line of illegal weapon smuggling that has taken place. I just remind you that very recently, a Jordanian member of parliament was arrested in the Alambi crossing, despite his political and diplomatic immunity, smuggling arms to Israel, and not for the first time. He was questioned and then released because Israel didn't want to make a scene and a diplomatic breakdown with Jordan. But this is another, not very usual, but another line. Of course, Iran is behind just about everything that has to do with destabilizing the region. One of the things that it's doing is supporting both in training and in funding the Hamas. Despite the fact that the Hamas is, of course, a Sunni organization in Gaza, the interest of the Iranians is very simple. Of course, work by proxies, not get the attention to Tehran, but rather remove attention, negative attention like that of the US and Israel from Tehran, and remove it to places that are inherently easy to destabilize, like Gaza Strip, like Jordan. Nobody speaks about that. But there's a huge, huge effort of the Iranians to destabilize Jordan. Don't overlook it. I cannot see all of the faces in the Zoom, but if you deal with the Middle East and you cover the Middle East, this is something that is not talked about. But there is a huge effort by the Iranians to try and destabilize relatively fragile Jordan. And this is a huge issue, because Jordan is very important for the region as a stable entity, both for the US, for the entire region, including Abraham, for countries, and of course, first and foremost, for Israel. Despite the negative condemnations and the negative rhetoric going on, and the yelling and so on, there's another level of how strategically important the stability of Jordan. And Iran is trying to destabilize that, Lebanon, Syria, of course, Gaza Strip, and naturally, let's say, move the struggle to the West Bank as well, because they have no interest in the Fatah leadership, which is not cooperating well enough with Iran. They want the Hamas and the Islamic Jihad to take over the West Bank. And if the situation continues as it does at the moment, unfortunately, there is a pretty good chance that they will succeed, because there is a huge weakness in the West Bank by the Palestinian leadership, and a huge, I cannot even describe how huge, a dissatisfaction and a disappointment, and a kind of a longing for a different situation in terms of a different leadership. But the young people, they are sick and tired of the corruption. You can see it in every blog, in every social media comment that goes on in Arabic, almost. They are sick and tired of the corruption of the Fatah, and therefore they're easy prey.
Thank you. Thank you, Rut, very much. It was very enlightening. And I think, Alex, we can open for some questions that are gathered in our chat tool.
Yes, thank you, Tal. I'm going to go first to Pedro Gonzalez of Atalaya in Spain. Pedro, feel free to unmute yourself and ask your question. Pedro? I'll give you another second. If not, I'll ask on your behalf. Okay, Pedro, I'll ask on your behalf. The question was, what do you expect from the Palestinians after this operation in Jenin? And there's another one, Tal, which I think could dovetail nicely. I don't have a specific, I just have a name iPhone on this one. But is there a leader emerging from these young groups who is actually standing up and opposing Abu Mazen, Mahmoud Abbas? So Tal, those two questions for our guests.
Okay, so Ruth, maybe you'll answer the second question about a specific young leader. Is there someone like that that you're undetected? And then we'll go to Ron for the other question.
So first of all, the reason, which is the very easy answer. The leadership has made very, very clear that anybody who raises their head in competition to the current reigning factors, you know, will not succeed. Of course, there's no real opposition, at least not in the form of a continuation of the current leadership. There is, of course, Hamas affiliated, Jihad affiliated and so on. But then again, if there was a leadership and I was to be stupid enough to name them, then, you know, any mentioned by Israelis of any kind of a potential leader in the West Bank immediately not kills them, but disintegrates their importance. Let's put it this way. So even if there was one, I would undoubtedly not mention their name.
Thank you. And Ron, I believe in short, the first question was, what next? What do you expect the Palestinians to do after this operation? Please unmute yourself, Ron. Ron, you're not unmuted. Not yet, just one second, please. No, not yet, Ron, you're not unmuted. We cannot hear you, I apologize. Ron, can you unmute yourself? Ron, you are not unmuted. Surely can we help from here?
I'm trying, I clicked on the button that I have on my side. But Ron, could you check if there's a microphone under your picture somewhere? I know you know.
Yeah, now we can hear you well, excellent.
Okay, so the question was, what will the Palestinians do? In short, the answer is they will go on doing what they did before this operation. And the IDF will start now a series of limited operations in order to quell, because this operation that just ended last night was the first in a series and was meant to start a process by which you slowly, but constantly and thoroughly quell the terrorism and the violent activity coming from the north of the West Bank. Because it is not only Jenin, Jenin was the hub. But the west, the north of the West Bank was the area from which the terrorism came out and was perpetrated. And the IDF and the GSS are intending to continue to do limited operations in order to not to cause too many casualties on both sides, by the way. And by constant work to try to bring terrorism and violence and instability in the north of the West Bank to a tolerated level. You can never stop terrorism, you can never annihilate terrorism. But you can bring it to a tolerable level. And this is what the IDF and the GSS will try to do with a lot of intelligence, qualitative intelligence, that end in very precise operational and weapons.
We mentioned before that you are a veteran of a lot of battles. This area of the Jenin refugee camp is very, very, very concentrated, very, very populated. How does a military force acting in such a thing? We know that at the end, there are, I believe, 11 or 12 dead Palestinians. And the IDF says none of them are non-involved.
The two main tools that enable the IDF and the GSS to avoid uninvolved or what we call collateral casualties from innocent civilians are to, the two tools are accurate and qualitative intelligence gathered by many sensors in the air and on the ground. And the second tool is using very precise weapons, munitions, and above all, operational methods. You don't go about occupying the refugee camp, for instance, which is not such a big perimeter, it is one kilometer by one kilometer, not more than that. But by going to spots, to where the laboratories are, where the production tools are, where mainly the headquarters are, etc., etc., and going to them precisely, but one by one, very thoroughly. And that is what they did in the last 48 hours. And this is how they managed to do something that I think is unique, as far as I can remember. And that is that no innocent civilian, no uninvolved civilian was hurt, not only killed, but was hurt during the operation. Yes, some of innocent civilians were hurt when they were hit by, when they ran away and fell and when they were hit by running cars and things like this. And they were treated in Jenin, the town, in the hospital. But no one was, no uninvolved civilian was hurt by a bullet.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I think we have a question from La Figaro. Could you please unmute yourself? Alex, do we have?
Yes, so first of all, actually, if I may, Tal, we'll go first to Catherine Di Peron from Les Échos, who patiently had a hand up, then we'll go to Guillaume.
Please, go ahead, I didn't see him, please, go ahead.
Maitreyn, allez-y.
Oui, bonjour, hi, thank you very much for this interesting meeting. I think it's a more question to Ron Ben Shai, but of course, Mrs. Bassam can answer too. You mentioned that Jenin was for decades a place of terrorism. We saw that in the Second Intifada, of course, it was a very, very big event in 2002. But even before, during the British Bandit, there was events in Jenin. So do you know, do you have explanations of, I don't know, history of local Jenin, of geography, of what are the ingredients of the spatial climate that there is in Jenin for decades and decades?
The north of the West Bank is, in its terrain, is very mountainous. But it is richer than the south of the West Bank. It's richer and more lucrative for occupiers than the south of the West Bank, where Hebron, where Hebron and other cities are located, south of Jerusalem. So you can see the, you can look at Jerusalem as the divide between north of the West Bank to the south of the West Bank. The north of the West Bank was a rich area with a lot of agriculture, but also with a lot of commerce and with a lot of ties to other parts of what was in the past Syria, nowadays, Jordan, and Palestine, of course, and etc., etc. And this area was also a passage area for all occupiers of Palestine in the history. And the occupiers raised a sort of rebellious instinct. This is the explanation, at least, that I got from Palestinians, mainly in Nablus. There were times when I could go there freely and talk to them and get explanation and I asked the same question. And this is the answer I got. And they said, the occupiers taught us to how to fight them or gave us motivation to fight them. I will only mention also in the Bible, there was a big fight between the sons of Jacob and the inhabitants of Nablus. And there was a big fight and there was a problem there. So this is the explanation.
Tal, you're gonna have to unmute yourself now, sorry.
I just see some more questions, please invite them.
With pleasure, Tal. So the first one comes from Guillaume de Dieu Le Voeux. Sounds like a good crusader name from France. La Figaro in Jerusalem. Guillaume, would you like to unmute yourself and ask your question? I guess not, hopefully.
Hi, hi, yes. I have two questions. The first one is to know if the IDF is going to strengthen its presence in the West Bank in the coming weeks. Can it do it? And the second question is, are we facing the first steps of a Third Intifada in the West Bank?
So a very solid question. If I may as well, Tal, I suggest there's a question that perhaps would suit Ruth down to the ground, which comes from Gudrun Doringa from the Salzburg Nachrichten. Gudrun, I hope I pronounced your name properly. Would you like to ask your question as well? We'll take a couple at a time.
Yes, hello, everybody. Thank you for being part of this discussion. We observed that Benjamin Netanyahu is fighting many battles right now. And I would like to know if there is a relation and what impact do the inner Israeli conflicts have on the development of the last days? Could you clarify that for me?
I believe Ruth is talking to us from the Knesset right now. So maybe you are with your finger on the essence of things.
You know, every second in the Knesset, something happens. So to be with your finger on a point is completely irrelevant because the next second, something happens. So with all respect to me, I will try very much. You asked if the internal, I go to the second question first because it's fresh in my mind, with your permission. If the current situation and the conflict within Israel and the political upheaval has any effect on what? You said on the last couple of days, do you mean what is happening in Jenin or anything like that?
My understanding, sorry, Ruth, from the question was, what does it have? What impacts does it have on the inner Israeli political dynamic? I.e. what's going on internally within Israel? What kind of pressures? Gudrun, I hope I'm not misconstruing your question. But that was my sense of what impact does Jenin have on the internal politics of Israel?
So Ms. Gudrun, is this what you intended to ask?
Also interesting, but actually I meant the other way around. Because I wanted to know if Netanyahu's government and the new combination of the other parties in his cabinet has anything to do with the developments in Jenin?
That's what I understood. So despite the fact that I belong to the opposition and I belong to Benny Gantz's party, who was the former chief of staff and the former minister of defense and of course, a leader of the blue and white party. I sincerely do not believe that, at least the decision makers, namely, the current prime minister and the minister of defense, Gallant, despite the fact that I'm not from their party, I'm opposing them, have any cynical intentions regarding the current operation. I am convinced of what I'm saying and I have a lot of respect for my own. My integrity is important to me. So I think that the situation, and this is what is not seen in a lot of the international media. And it's very difficult to see that the situation coming from the West Bank has become unbearable. I, again, have no sympathies for many aspects of the current coalition. But going inside civilian arena with weapons, with premeditated intentions to simply murder people, which has been done in the past six months, 28 people, innocent civilians. None of them were training, none of them were doing anything, none of them were at all involved, were murdered. And at some point, of course, there was a public pressure, there was an internal coalition pressure. But regardless of that, I am 100% convinced that the decision was made because 28 of our people were killed. We know that there are laboratories of unbelievable amount. And I didn't hear the first part of Ron's speech, but we know this. Huge laboratories of self-made weapons. Their intention is anything but peaceful. The force behind this issue is Iran. Their intentions are extraordinarily clear. By the way, the destabilization of the West Bank and Jordan and everything that is the attempt of the Iranians at the moment is very much in the disfavor of Europe. Let's take just the Syrian example as a point in case, where hordes and hordes of refugees simply came to Europe. And the implications are clear in terms of the infrastructure, the education, the economic consequences and so on. And this is the destabilization that serves the interests of Iran and Hamas. Because Hamas simply is waiting for the day after to take over. That's what he wants, it's not making a secret out of it. It's just not doing it now, not to make too much of a mess. It's waiting a little bit, but it's preparing the ground. And in the face of that, the Israeli government, a government by definition, has to protect its civilians. I disagree with 99% of what this current coalition is doing. And yet, the overruling responsibility of any government is to protect first and foremost its citizens. And it must do what it does. To try and color it in different colors is, it's crazy, it's crazy. And by the way, if you notice, the condemnations of the UAE and Egypt and Saudi Arabia, that all came, they were all loud and clear, but they weren't as stringent and as... Um negative as one could have expected. Also, it took some time before they came out and spoke against what the IDF is doing in Jenin. Not because they are in favor of, you know, military eh eh actions by the Israeli army in the West Bank. But simply because they get it, because if anybody even smells of anything to do with the Muslim Brotherhood in those countries. They don't eh act freely for one second. Nobody raises questions about it. Nobody asks the UN to eh eh intervene, a special UN commission on this issue. This is what happens and these countries remain stable to a significant degree. The Israelis would have missed their ultimate responsibility as a government. If they cannot provide the very basic eh tenets of walking in the streets of Jerusalem, Tel Aviv. Haifa, Hadera, and not getting shot at or or run over or or knifed.
Thank you, and we have a question from Ronald from Les Parisiens.
Oh, 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 sorry, Tal, we didn't get a chance to answer. Hopefully Ron can answer the question from Guillaume.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In a figure, which was, do you think the IDF will strengthen its presence in the West Bank as a result of eh of the operation? And are we facing the first steps of a potential third intifada?
I can answer that.
The answer to the first question is just the opposite. The IDF has strengthened its presence in the West Bank to twenty five battalions eh before the operation. Now, if everything goes according to the plan, the IDF will reduce its presence in the West Bank. Eh because there, there will not be so many eh soldiers needed to defend the, the trebellers. In on the route of the West Bank because of eh that they are needed there because of terrorism. So this is the answer to the first question. The, the answer is just the other way around. The presence will be reduced, the soldiers will go to, to their camps to the, to do training. And what they, they are, either their jobs eh or tasks they are supposed to do. The, the answer to the, to the question about whether eh we are witnessing now a, a third intifada. The answer i- is also no eh and why it is not no, it is no because. The large population doesn't join the, the terrorists. The Islamic, the Palestinian Islamic Jihad, the Hamas, the, the, the other eh smaller organizations. Eh are trying to instigate eh eh a sort of eh a general mutiny. Eh which you call intifada eh eh in, in the West Bank. And the West Bankers eh refuse to eh, to eh, to eh respond positively to, to the call. Even during the days that the operation was on, during the hours, the forty eight hours. The West Bank went about its business as usual. The, the eh workers that work in Israel, about hundred thousand went to work. The, the eh commerce went as usual. There were few demonstrations and that's all. Demonstrations by dozens, not by hundreds. And eh eh this is, these are good signs. Eh eh the, and intifada as we knew it in two thousand eh two or two thousand eh eh one. Eh was a different story altogether, I remember it. Eh the whole Palestinian nation was up in arms. And this is not even remotely the case today.
Uh Tal, brother, you're muted again. I beg your pardon.
Uh thank you. I think we have this question from the Les Parisiens.
We do. Ronald Tesorvier eh from Le Parisien in France. Ronald, the, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh hello everyone, nice to meet you. Uh I was asking if the multiplication of conflict zones in Jenin, Gaza, Jerusalem, the Berlin border. Is a major threat to the security of the country and the real objective Hamas and even more Iran? And does IDF have the strength to fight all the battles at the same times?
It's a great question.
Ron, please.
Eh can you, can you repeat the, the question?
If, if I may, Ronald, I'll do it um uh with a quick respect to Ronald, minus, minus the French accent. The, 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 the question was as follows. There's a multiplication of conflict zones right now and you've got Jenin, you've got Gaza, you've got Jerusalem, you've got the Lebanese border. Um all of these are major threats to the security of a country and ultimately.
We have Syria.
And and indeed Syria and the real, the real objective of, of Iran and and Hamas and 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 the rest. Does the IDF have a strength, operational capability to fight all of these battles at the same time?
The answer is yes. The answer is yes, and the IDF is eh actually, you can see it by, by, by yourself. The IDF is combating eh. Two days ago, there was eh an operation in Syria. Two days later, there was the Jenin operation. Eh yesterday, there was an attack, rocket attacks from Gaza and the IDF responded. Which means the IDF has the military capacity and the military capability. And I think what is more important than all, the military experience. Eh 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 how to deal with all this. I, I, it costs a lot of money and 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 it costs life. But yes, so far eh Israel has the capability to tackle Iran eh through the Mossad. The Palestinians through the GSS and the IDF and the IDF on the borders, yes, we can do it.
Uh you mentioned Syria and eh just a bit west of there, there is Lebanon, which is actually Hezbollah. Um we know that in these very days, there is an issue of tents. Uh now it's one, before today's, it was eh two tents for a couple of months now, or at least few weeks. That Hezbollah eh put on eh what you can call Israel eh soil eh behind the blue line. Uh how would the, the Jenin operation will affect the relationship with Hezbollah if it all?
It doesn't affect the relationship with the Hezbollah, only indirectly. And you can understand that Israel didn't take care of those eh disprovocation by the tents. That Hezbollah eh erected on eh thirty meters in Israeli territory. In order to provoke some limited action by, by Israel eh 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 will change the, the picture. The Jenin operation eh was first in the priority order eh of the IDF. And I believe that the tents of Hezbollah, which mean the only one tent that remains on Israeli soil. Eh you'll see a solution of this eh problem sooner than later.
Thank you, and if we are talking about regional effects, eh eh Ruth, I believe you were eh co-chairing the eh Abraham Accord caucus eh in the Israeli Knesset. Uh every time when Israel finds itself eh in such situation, there's always the question, okay, if we go in, if we do something. How would it affect the relationship between Israel and the Arab countries? Could you please elaborate on that?
So the Abraham Accord countries, um especially with the leadership of the UAE has of course, they have of course made a courageous step. They've taken a population which has been fed with anti-Israeli rhetoric for many decades. And told them two and a half years ago, we are now promoting peace with Israel. It's in the vested interest of our country and therefore, this is the decision that we are making. And whether you are eh an expat or an emirati or of whichever nationality in the UAE. Um you are simply not permitted to speak out against that in public. Because this is the decision taken by the leadership, very much differently than the one eh taken eh many years back by Egypt. So whereas eh the Egyptian Israeli peace eh, a very long one, over forty years, lacks normalization. Lacks warmth and has not trickled down to the people, to people. In the UAE, we just take the UAE as a point in case, it's different. There is a lot of eh potential, a lot of economic cooperation, a lot of technology, a lot more than just the top layer. Which means that when things like this happen, um I have no doubt that there is something that's going on amidst the population. But they cannot express it freely, they cannot go against again, as I said, because it's not done, it's not accepted. Even if you're Syrian and you are there, you cannot speak against the Abraham Accords or act unkindly towards Israeli business people or whatever. So they have to eh declaratively eh speak against what the IDF is doing. In what appears to be civilian Palestinian arenas. But in, as a matter of fact, in fact, they are completely, and I have no doubt of it. On the level of the leaderships, they understand the difficulty, the complexity, the inherent eh explosive potential. That exists in a place like Jenin, the wheeling and dealing of the Hamas to try and overtake the West Bank and that arena. They do not have any interest in destabilizing the area and the arena. Exactly opposite of what is the interest of Iran. And then some of you may ask, but a lot of them have embraced Iran back. Saudis have embraced Iran, they have an agreement with them, the UAE is making more meetings with Iran. They've suddenly started um being kinder to Qatar, which was a eh sort of a persona non grata in the arena. They've even taken Syria back into the Arab League. But there are always, and I'm sure all of you are well aware of this, given that you deal with the region. There are always two different levels of analysis. There is the declarative level, which means very, very little. In terms of the Arab world, whether it comes from the Arab League or from each leadership of the Abraham Accords or any other Arab countries bilaterally. For example, Jordan, and I want to go back to Jordan for a second, eh what there is as a real um. A very basic understanding amidst the leadership. Because they have within them the potential of extremist Islam as well. It's something that is potentially possible to undermine the current leadership. And they know what needs to be done in order to quell any such eh attempt at destabilizing their own countries. One word with your permission about Jordan. Jordan is weak. And it's very, very, very important. It's much weaker than Egypt, even though Egypt has its problems, God knows. But when Iran is trying to meddle in Egypt, which also God knows it has been doing for decades. Egypt is very strong and very quick to respond. Egypt sent back I- Iranian spies endless times, threw out the Iranian ambassador many times. It has a very strong reaction and they say very basically, we having none of that. Jordan doesn't have the strength to do that. So when the Iranians suddenly find Shiite religious sites, which happen to be in Jordan. And they happen to be relatively close to the Israeli border and they start meddling within that small but very strategically important country. The Jordanians don't have a lot which they can do. But Israel, Egypt, the UAE, the US and certainly Europe has a vested interest for this not to happen. Now, what happens because of the meddling of Iran and because of the attempt of the Hamas to take ownership over what is Jerusalem. The holy of holies. Every time there is something that goes on in the security arena like right now with Jenin. And they shout against the Israeli occupier, the Israeli IDF. Notice that the Jordanians try to shout louder. It always follows the same route. Because they are too weak to move away the attempts of the Hamas to take ownership over the holy sites. Which are traditionally the Hashemite Kingdom's responsibility. And they are too weak to move away the Iranian attempts to destabilize Jordan. Add to that, all the refugees that came in hordes to Jordan, the infrastructure, the economy. It's very, very difficult for Jordan and huge implication for the stability of the region. So if I were you, I would watch out for Jordan, what's going on there in terms of the um. Standing up to the Iranian and the Hamas attempts to destabilize.
Thank you very much, Ruth. Alex, I believe there are eh two more questions, which might be the last one. Could you please present the people who asked?
They, they are indeed, Tal, and for the sake of speed, I'll just eh, I'll just run through them quickly. Uh second, the first question was a follow-on from eh, from our friend at Le Figaro, which was. Uh how do we explain or how do our guests explain the response from Gaza being so limited for rockets? Second question, um and a more general one perhaps to, to, to wrap up on, of course entirely up to you moderator. Is there are doubts that what was achieved in the long run in Jenin, they, they got some Israeli forces. Got a couple of weapons depots and a facility for self-made rockets. But the motivation for revenge probably increased, especially amongst young Palestinian generations. Which seems to admire these new militant groups eh from Jenin and Nablus like Lions Den. How do our guests see that eh, that situation evolving? Tal?
Ron, please.
Eh certainly the young eh um generation in eh eh Jenin refugee camp. Will try to revenge and will try to show that they are eh eh, they have not beaten by, by the IDF. And that is why the IDF and the GSS will have to go in again and again. The, the story is not over yet. It is only has started the new phase of, of the, of, of a long process. Eh as for the rest of the Palestinians eh, they, they will go on about their business. They, there are no signs that, that Jenin will eh is becoming a sort of eh inspiration. Yes, there were two attempts, there were two eh eh stabbing and eh and eh overrunning attempts eh in the last days. But these were in the time where the spirits were heated eh during the, the eh Jenin operation. Eh by Palestinians that were inside Israel, not in the West Bank and not in Gaza. Now, yesterday, yes, we had five rockets eh launched from Gaza against Sderot, the, the town of Sderot. Near, near the border between Gaza and and Israel. But these were shot eh by a sort of a rogue. by a sort of a rogue rogue organization, and not an organization, but a group. Not by Hamas and not by Islamic Jihad and not even by the popular committees that we know is a big organization in Gaza. So it was treated, it was a local action and was treated as such by the IDF, by attacking military installations of Hamas, just in order to remind Hamas that they are the sovereign in the Gaza Strip. And as sovereign, they are responsible to prevent such rogue actions from Gaza. This is the best I can say about these two questions.
Thank you very much for explaining the background, elaborating what was going on within the Jenin refugee camp, and for you, Ruth, for really explaining the ecosystem we are living in. It was very enlightening. Alex, the floor is yours, and I thank you all for giving us your time.
Yes, thanks indeed. It was wonderful to have both Ron and Ruth with us today, as well as all of our guests for this briefing. I hope you found it enlightening. We will be sending you all a recording of this entire briefing because we did cover a lot of ground, that it's always useful for you, especially for quotes or to reflect or to go a bit deeper, to review the video at your own leisure when you're writing copy or indeed preparing for broadcasts. So on behalf of all of our APEA press team, thank you so much for joining us at such short notice. We know you're all busy people in very busy, active newsrooms, so it's always a pleasure to have you with us. Thanks again to our guests, and we very much look forward to welcoming you to the next APEA press brief. Until then, dear friends, see you next time. Shalom.
See you next time. Shalom.